And whether sidewalks should be going in or not, and I also would like to think of, I think there's, I don't know how many there were, seventeen or nineteen homes that were built within the last year and a half that don't have sidewalks and did not contribute to a sidewalk fund. And, and then so these homeowners might have legal action acquired to then contribute to the sidewalk fund, but not the nineteen other homes that were built that didn't have sidewalks. And maybe some of them were not forced to, but some of them may have been on roads where sidewalks had been created and added. So I just think tonight, just focus on this property since we're past the permitting and we're kind of at the end now, and let's move, look at the future ones. Yeah, we did the plan for that and it worked out, but for tonight it's a different situation, and it really doesn't make sense to put a sidewalk in there. The county can do what they want down the road, but tonight's not about that.
The next, uh, the next blue card from the house, yes. Nancy Berry.
Nancy Berry, four thirty-five West Tyler. Um, Roger brought up a really good point about the county, this portion, I do believe, here.
You got a little closer.
Um, so the county actually has a trail, an existing trail that comes all the way down. Eventually they will fill that in if there is any will happen and they come and sound like us. Maybe more, I think they should waste their money, they should not waste their money on any sidewalk until they agree with the county what they want to do. Otherwise, the county's just gonna tear it up and build it for what they want, for that part of the trail.
That is another reason for the sidewalk fund without the functions, since that's part of the-
That's part of the county, that's not the city.
And the next blue card I have is for Brian Carroll.
Brian Carroll, six-two-seven, North Orange Ave. I, I can kind of concur with them. When we started our permit process, um, about two months ago, sidewalks were never talked about at all. Um, any paperwork we were given, sidewalks were never in it. My lot, where my lot is, I'm not in a gateway, I'm not in any specific area, I'm off of Orange towards Tangerine. There's no sidewalks you can even see from afar, you know? So from what I understand is, after we submitted our permit, the day after back in April, Debbie called me and said, um, "Oh, by the way, we had, you might have to put sidewalks in." And I was like, "Debbie, I'm not trying to give you a stop story, but like, something you might afford it, I don't know, you know, I'm retired military, this, all my funds, I have family, four kids, blah, blah, blah." I didn't count for that. And I was like, "You never told me, nothing you guys heard. Um, ask for details on it, it'll be adding information on it." So I believed them, nobody told, nobody told me. And where my lot is, there's a house that's been there for twenty years. Other houses are all constructed, so the sidewalk's gonna stop at my house. It's not gonna continue down, it's not gonna go down like a cabin, it's all culverts or lake or vice versa. They told me I have to have one, he told me I have to have one, I met him. I'm not in arterial or the ways, I'm not in any specific, same thing goes with them. I mean, like, it just doesn't, like, I keep asking for information, um, you know, what are the realities of it? Like, if I get sued or something, I get hurt with a sidewalk and it gets broken, apparently you can see covers it, or that part. Just basically trying to figure out what it's fair, but my permit, it cleared, it cleared the other day. So I just want some clarification now, and it doesn't really think a lot of sense. Somebody really knows, that's why I believe.
Nobody really knows, it's, it's a good point, that's why we're, that's why we're not able to give concrete answers right now, Mr. Gray.
So I mean, if sidewalks, if sidewalks are not in the gateway or arterial or anywhere specific, what is it, just gonna stop at my house and that's it? Or is the city gonna pick it up and bring it down to Tangerine or somewhere else?
I can't give you concrete answers on that.
So then am I supposed to pay for it or just have, like, how does that work?
I'm sorry.
I said, at that point, if I provide a sort of paperwork to get a certificate of occupancy, and then if nothing ever happens from it, then I just have a sidewalk and nothing to go to.
Those are exactly the questions we're trying to answer right now. Thank you. Um, I, I can't give you an exact answer. Well, that, that's what we're trying to decide. Um, in, in one moment, I do wanna ask one question, I will hit my next. Mr. City Attorney, the, the question has been raised by a couple people now, and it seems to be a very valid, um, about the approval of a site plan, um, in the process of permitting, and that the, basically at the contract, um, at, at that stage of the construction process, I may be adding a word to this, not quite rightly, but once they have an approved site plan, um, as in, in the process of going through construction like this, isn't that a compelling argument to, to not then turn around and say, "Well, but..."
Two, two responses. First is, I would probably have to come from the building official as to why plans are being approved, whoever approved the plan without sidewalks. What's the justification for that? Or what is the reason for that? Secondly, um, there's something called, this law, which is really what you're talking about, is that somebody relies on representation from governmental entity, they rely on it to their detriment, and then the, the representation was wrong, and it's highly inequitable to come back and hold that person, uh, make them, you know, change what they did and reliance on the representation. It's very hard to apply a stop to the government entity, because the reason is, if the staff member makes a representation of the code incorrectly, and somebody goes on, starts building, and that's inter, wrong interpretation, in binding on the city, effectively the staff member has amended the code. And there's a process for amendment code, complicated, you know, different ordinance, so that's why courts are very reluctant to allow staff to effectively amend the code. And so you, you would have to have a situation where it is, I, somebody relies on, on a representation to their detriment, and it's highly inequitable. And I had a conversation with Kayla and the owner about that. I said, "If you came in and you said to me your house, someone said, 'You can build within so many feet of the property line, and you built the house and they were wrong,' well, if you relied on that representation to build the house, and for us to come in and say, 'Now you gotta tear down the house, you gotta move the house,' I can see where equitable stop would come in, because that would be highly inequitable to make somebody change." In this case, you know, if there really wasn't a, a false representation in it, there was no representation made about sidewalks, but where is the reliance, where, where is the inequitable reliance on the fact that it's not there, that we rely upon, that it would be highly inequitable to make them out of the sidewalk? That, that's kind of the missing element of the end. Yes, okay, if, assuming the lack of putting a sidewalk in the site plan is viewed as a representation, okay, how did you rely on that representation to your detriment? And why would it be highly inequitable to make you now comply? Why would it be highly inequitable now to make you put the sidewalk in because it wasn't on the plan? You're still gonna build the house. I mean, you know, where is that detrimental reliance? So it's very hard to apply that.
I understand, my, my thought on that would be, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt, it's kind of like you, you brought that in. Um, my, my question then would be, if I were not playing devil's advocate exactly, but trying to look at the other side. Um, so a homeowner has got a site plan, they weren't planning on sidewalks, they're working their way through this process, and it's definitely what you're saying, it's not like you build five feet off, over the, over the setbacks and trying to move a whole house. You're right, it doesn't apply, doesn't anywhere meet that kind of a, of a, what's her phrase? Substantial?
Isn't that quote, substantial reliance?
Substantial, oh, okay. Anyway, um, this is not that, but, what it did do was allow them to, um, put their budgets together, create a, you know, if they had easy numbers, a hundred thousand dollars to spend, and they're, they're going through the process and they spend, they see that they're coming to the finish line here, and they're, they've worked in everything they can for that hundred thousand dollars, and then we turn around and say, "Okay, you got fifteen thousand more." While we haven't, haven't made a move anything, we haven't, haven't, it's not moving a, a two hundred thousand dollar structure, it's still, it's still very frustrating in the process. I can see, I can see why they're extremely frustrated in the process, um, by having, you know, at the eleventh hour, finding something. Now, this, this, while it may not be substantial in some ways, if, you know, we're talking fifteen thousand dollars here.
I, I understand that, I can show you some cases, that are harsher results than we're talking about here. The courts have said, sorry. I'm gonna say that, they, they accept, that it has to be highly inequitable, because in essence, what you're doing is you're allowing staff to amend the law, and they don't have to order them to amend the law.
And I agree with you, and that's a significant problem.
So that's really what the issue is, and, and I've said it, and I've said it to Kayla, the homeowner, and I've said it to Mr. Gray. I'm, I'm kind of a person who says, "Look, we have a lot of discretion in writing our laws, so we either force the laws as written, or we amend the laws, change the laws. You know, you don't want sidewalks, you change it, that's easy, it's not hard to do. We don't ignore the law. Whenever you start ignoring the law, just like in this situation, sidewalks are supposed to be part of the approval process, and we're not. We get into situations like this because we ignore the law. We don't ignore the law."
I wanna say something. There is a law, there is a code, in our codes, about permitting, and it says, once a permit is approved, that is a legal document, and there is no exceeding that scope of work. The city cannot require us to-
Can you cite that?
Yeah, I have it in the packet that I gave you guys, and there's a whole page on it.
We will look at that.
So you should look at that, because if we're enforcing some codes and not others, that's an issue. You gotta pick which code you're gonna enforce.
The city's code, and we have to enforce the city's code.
Yeah, one, all of them, not just some.
That's my, that's kind of the point, isn't it? It's, it's exactly that. Uh, we're trying to do that, and we're trying to make it work, you know, in a difficult situation, because obviously, it's evolved into a difficult situation. We're not trying to make it difficult for you, you just happen to be the one where it came, this, all of a sudden, here it is, it's right in front of us now, both of you. Um, it's right in front of us now, it's had a significant problem that's developed, and we're trying to set it right, and set it up right happy.
Can I just say one thing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, wait. So David Rogers, two fifty-nine, I was thinking. Um, and I understand what Scott's saying, he's a, he's a good guy, he is a good guy. And I was just about to say, it's, it's very special. He, the person, a colleague, a, a city inspector, this gentleman Mark, and this is what he does for a living, you know, this is, this is, this is a, a approval process that he's been out, someone's been out to our house fifteen, twenty times, approving things along the way. And like Corey referenced, and Kayla, this is the first page, is our site plan, that has been continually approved, and you're right, Mr. Mayor, we had a budget, we had two kids at college, fifteen thousand dollars is a financial break point for us, and it's a great point. So all we're asking is, we talked about the, the ability to change or amend the sidewalk based on an intersection, or stopping at a certain point with no really reason to continue. Now we're talking about the legal aspect, and that we have relied on someone who's been out to our house numerous times, that's not just an employee, he's working for us every day, in and out. If I made a presentation to my company, it would hold me. And so all we're asking is, that you see that, you see the financial burden, you see what he has approved to what we do forward, and, and agree with us that sidewalk isn't needed in this certain chain, because those are the statements that we've kind of outlined tonight.
I, I understand, and I, and I appreciate the position you're in, I, I think we've stated it many times, is that we do appreciate it. We do understand that this problem didn't come up in a vacuum, it's, it's, it's an ongoing problem, it's happened in numerous, numerous applications. Um, we are in the difficult circumstance of, we have, we have two competing motivations up here, to really boil it down, make it overly simplified. Um, one is, is as a, as a political mind, we always wanna say, "Yeah, sure, we wanna help you out." Um, I mean, that's, that's our nature, that's, we're certain type of people up here, we wanna help people out. We all, we all also have a responsibility to the city, to serve the city as well, and this is a complicated issue, it's obviously a complicated issue with two very clear sides that are completely different, and yet both of them make perfect sense. And for us to try to decide that tonight, we are trying to find a way to not make that decision tonight, because it's the first time we've really looked at it and talked to it, and to make a snap decision, and you see most trials last, you have days and weeks, and, you know, it's because people need to take time to wrap their brains around this thing, and they come to a, a well-considered decision. We're trying to find ourselves that time through this workshop process, um, so that we don't, so that if we don't, not serve the city, and also not serve, we're trying to, we're trying to come up with a freelance idea, and trying to give ourselves time to do that. Mr.?
Yeah, I just said, when you just reset both sides, I don't want you to think that I'm opposing the request. I'm not, I'm not opposing it off the, you have the ability to say, "It's not practical." With that, that's within your code, you have that ability, that's within your discretion, do that, I'm not opposing anything. Um, and I said, it was a general statement that, you know, I just do not like ignoring our codes in this situation. You know, we, we, you have discretion in writing the code. Write the code, if you don't like the way it's written, let's rewrite it, but let's not ignore it to make exceptions.
We can't, we can't capriciously apply the code, that sets us up for all kinds of problems.
Whenever you don't apply some code to somebody, they will always come back and bite you. I've seen it enough to know, that's the wrong course we actually do. I'm not saying you're ignoring the code by giving them their legal, the code allows you to know, to say, "It's not practical today," that's fine. Um, you have an option there. I agree, we ought to have better guidelines, and maybe we can workshop that, um, but it's, you can make that decision, you're not ignoring the code, but it, you know, I don't know enough about permitting and planning process, what it goes through, how that process goes to be able to say, "Should sidewalks be there, should it not be there?" I'm not fault, I, I don't know, it's not like the, you're from the building official, the people who review the plans and say, "Why aren't we reviewing, you know, requiring sidewalks?" I will say, I read the code, if you're not on arterial or a collector, and you're not in the gateway, I don't, I don't see how you require that, uh, uh, that. This, this makes it clear, now, there's some, there's some things that you can misinterpret differently, but there are some inconsistent provisions, we can try to read these things that make them make sense, so they're not inconsistent. So I read it and say, "If you're on arterial or collector, yes, you gotta have the code, doesn't matter how many sidewalks are on each side of the street, if you're on arterial or collector, you gotta have it." Um, there's another provision that says, "All homes, commercial, you know, new homes, rebuilding homes, yeah, that is, you know, it says, 'Sidewalk shall be required to be constructed on any new or redeveloped individual or subterranean residential or non-residential development site.'" You read that, every street in everywhere in this, in this city has to have a sidewalk. Well, how do you drive that, because the part that says, "Only if you're on collector or arterial." And, you know, that, those two things are inconsistent, so the way I read it is, that was intended to say, even if you're rehabilitating or refurbishing an existing house, if you're on an arterial and you don't have a sidewalk, you gotta go on it, unless this commission wastes, or allows them to own it. That's how I interpret it, because you try to interpret both provisions not being inconsistent to be read together, so that they make sense. So that's, I read paragraph six, I mean, it really doesn't matter whether it's residential, commercial, new, or refurbishing, existing, the period, whatever the case may be, if you're on arterial or collector, you gotta have it. That's how I read it.
And I'm sure our ultimate goal in writing these codes and whatnot is to make it clear, clear cut, so that you don't have to have a legal mind to, to work out the right interpretation. We want this to be clear, and we wanna, we wanna make it that way. Obviously, we can't tonight, but we can work towards that. Um, I, Mr. Vassal, obviously you have something you want to say?
Yeah, the, the argument's compelling, um, and the part of it that's most compelling to me is, being a contractor, depending on plans and specifications, uh, it's, it's difficult for me to sit in your seat and say, "This is okay, it's not." As far as I'm concerned, we collectively screwed up. It should have been a site plan, that way there's absolutely no decision. Uh, you would have known to put it in your budget, you would have known you need to find it in there, so I believe we screwed up. Now, if there needs to be a sidewalk there, and I can make the argument that we do, okay, eventually, connect it all together, but, you know, is, is it on us now, because we didn't do our due diligence and let you know that this was part of your responsibility? I'm thinking, yes, I'm thinking it is. And so, as much as I would love to be able to, uh, put money in a fund, or force you to put the sidewalk in, uh, going back to what information you were given to do your job, when you were not given what you needed to do your job, and that's our responsibility to do. And I don't know how you recall anything other than a stick. Now, I understand enforcing the code now is, is our responsibility to all of our citizens, but in this particular case, we are the citizen that's here that's needing our help, and if we need to put that sidewalk in, I personally, the city should pay for it at this point, because we missed it. And I'm gonna withdraw most of my, I'm gonna make a motion.
The, uh, technically, technically, that's not the way it works, I've been reading way too much, Robert's a little bit of a busy, but, uh, but we don't need to hang our hats on that technicality. Um, the motion, um, you would like to make is to, uh, well, what our, what our attorney has said, is that our relief here is to find in this case, that if we follow the code, that we can find that this is not-
It's impractical.
It's impractical, or-
The part of it that makes it impractical to me is the fact that we didn't give them information that they could do.
Yeah, impractical, impractical, not, doesn't have to be defined necessarily.
I don't use the mic.
Exactly. Because it's not, I, I'm not gonna sit here arguing with you and say, and tell you that I don't think putting a sidewalk is impractical, I definitely, but I can make the argument that if you weren't given sufficient information to do your job, that, that's why it's impractical.
So you'd like to, so you'd like to make a motion to, in this, in this situation?
It's impractical.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, uh, to waive this, this sidewalk fee, uh, because, for, well, because we, as a commission, deem it impractical to require it in this circumstance. And then, okay, now we move to discussion, we have a motion from Commissioner Vassal, a second from Commissioner Gray. So now we move to discussion, my first question would be, we have other people here who are in much the same situation, we want to-
My advice, I think I have one for you right now, if somebody else wants to come forward and ask for the same exception, that's a fine one.
Okay.
Not that anybody ever have to stand up and talk about it.
Okay.
I don't know the facts of this case, this, this circumstance of this case, or anything, just let them come forward on that, and then the next one.
Okay. Um, Mr. Carroll, you wanna speak to this student's case?
Uh, just wait, let, let him hear it.
Well, I didn't think you did. Okay, so I have a motion in a second, and further discussion. Hearing none, I'll call the question. Uh, again, the, the motion is, is to not apply, not require the sidewalk be put in or pay it into the fund, because we deem it to be impractical in this, in this case. That's the motion, of course. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion carries. At this point, I believe you'll receive a, a CDO.
Right, tomorrow morning?
That's not my statement. Yeah, I think temporary, I don't even recommend.
Do you still need more job, do we still need staff to pay more attention to sidewalk apples?
Yeah. Oh, I don't think there's any danger that, that this, that message is lost on the, on staff, but you're right. Um, Mr. Carroll, did you want to address the commission?
Uh, just a combination, the representative's side.
I don't, that's what I meant, I don't think, if you'd like to address the commission, you may. Make sure that microphone's turned on, this, the, the, yeah, yeah, really, hold that right in your chair.
Brian Carroll, two-two-seven, North Orange Ave. I just wanna kind of piggyback on the same situation, like I said earlier. Before we had our home plan constructed, and I paid all that money to have this built, I went to Debbie and bought the land, made sure that the house that we wanted could be built on that land, it's two and a half acres, we wanted the more, the country field, have our four kids grow up, blah, blah, blah. Um, had the plan built, submitted it for permitting, it went through permitting, just the other day, Debbie called me, said, "Hey, your permit's ready to be picked up, they're good to go." We're not in the gateway court, we're, we're not in any arterial area, we're off of Orange towards Tangerine. There's a house directly next to us, been there for twenty years, big oak trees, um, electric boxes, power poles, you would have to cut way into the yard for the sidewalk. Um, same thing for the other side. The lot next to us, kind of the same situation, but like I said, we're not in any specific area, sidewalks were never talked about, like I said earlier. Um, I budgeted specifically, kind of factoring everything in, so I submitted my permit, got the call, was told about this, it was kind of a shock, you know? I don't think it's very fair, like, previous people mentioned, you know, what about all these other people that were supposed to be held to that standard, if we're not? Why is it all on me and this gentleman? I'm kind of trying to be proactive about it, because six, seven month town road, my house is done, and they still have not made up their mind about what they're gonna do with it, if it's gonna hold me up. I have a wife and four kids, we're living with my mom right now. Um, it's, you know, we're just trying to do the right thing, and it seems, like I said earlier, no offense, but they're trying to figure it out. I'm asking for an exception for ours.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have, you have a site plan that's been-
Yes, sir.
So you find yourself in the same position, except that your certificate of approval isn't up to before it's signed?
No, no, sir, not.
So I, I think you're sitting pretty, in, in that, we've kind of set a precedent up here, if you will, um, that you're sitting in very much the same situation. So I think, um, okay.
Yes, sir, I was making my position, and it's, you know, this kind of scope to your case, it wasn't on the agenda, it was here, you're kind of piggybacking. Um, you know, you, the issue of the sidewalk, sidewalks are like the last thing always to be resolved, so there's time to resolve this. Let me give the staff and see if, what their interpretation was, did they, why did they say you need a sidewalk? And then if they, if, if there's an opinion that they, you need a sidewalk, then you can ask for them for it's not practical to be relieved. And the staff, they say, you know, within the next couple weeks, we may look at it and get back to you and say, "You don't need a sidewalk." But then you can be back for your next one.
Debbie, Debbie told me that I have to have a sidewalk, but because-
Let me, let me, let me, I wasn't, let me interview, just say that. And then, and see where we stand on these interpretations, and if it's, if we don't get a resolution, see, what they've asked for is, they had to have a sidewalk, there was no question that they had to have a sidewalk for our code, and they're, they're asking us to relieve not to build the sidewalk, which was the commission granted. On your case, I don't believe that, I don't, I like to find out the details on it and see, do you really need a sidewalk? If the determination is yes, then you can come back and ask for the exact same relief that these individuals asked for. But if the determination is no, you know, it's a misinterpretation, whatever they, they, you don't need a sidewalk, you know, they don't have to take, they don't need to take action, because they, you don't have a sidewalk, you're not required to have a sidewalk. So we could, we could probably, we'll try to resolve this next month, and then if it's not resolved, then you can come back to them and be, you know, next year.
Yes, yes, from what I understand, they're going based off that every new construction has to have a sidewalk, so that's what they were basing it off, and not factoring in the acreage, where it's at, what the hills has, or what, you know, all that.
Yeah, but that would get into maybe what they would look at, but I think there's an interpretation issue. I interpret as saying, it has to be on a chair or collector, they're saying any construction. So that's what the interpretation might be, so I wasn't involved in your decision, um, I just got involved with this sidewalk, and this piece of individual structure, this is the first time I got involved in sidewalks.
I didn't know about the situation, I, I followed the commission official, and I talked a week, weeks ago, required to do the ordination, I mean, I'm in here anyway, so it just happens.
Okay, go ahead, let me- Let me...
I just have a little idea for a assumption that I want to make some statements.
No, and I totally agree. And I don't, you know, there at the very end of that construction, I was, you're at the very beginning, it sounds like. So not to say we're going to take months, but you don't need a decision right now.
Sorry.
We're not waiting for a C.O. right now for it. So let, let staff work on it for the next month. And if we don't come to a resolution and you want to ask for a relief, the commission will be on the next month's agenda. If that's okay with you.
Okay.
Okay.
Also, while you're researching that, staff can look into if there's any of those residents along that area that's paid into the sidewalk fund rather than putting it in the sidewalk. Because I know we had some on that had tree issues that didn't want to remove trees that paid into the sidewalk fund instead. So if any of those are along that route, that those could, you know, help in the search. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. I know an hour and a half talking about a sidewalk is, seems excruciating and agonizing. But it's an hour and a half that's well spent and it's, it's working us towards a solution that we hope will be applicable across the board and understood across the board. Um, and sometimes you've just got to give people time to get there. That's my job, is to figure out how long and how, if we're ever going to die of starvation before we get there. But we didn't. We made it. Nobody's died. And, and I think we came to a, a good solution. Yeah, I didn't even bring my M&amp;M's tonight. That's right.
There, there's some out there.
Look, oh, yeah, I have a set over there in the morning. Oh, my goodness. So I do have my M&amp;M's. We can go till 2:30 in the morning if we need to. Um, I don't want to do... Okay, so thank you very much for your patience. I'm glad we got to an amicable solution. I'm glad we're making this work. And I know you'll do it there going in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you to the Troys as well and all your work. I'm serious. You're, 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 you're working with us. We're, we're trying to make this a community that works together. Sometimes we struggle, but just like any family, we're going to get there. Uh, next is commission reports by his own. Um, I have a line here, so I guess I'll start. Um, we have, and here's another that's been going on for a while. Uh, and it's very important. Um, we have before the Evolution Forever, um... They're, not we. The Casa family has, before Evolution Forever, an option of purchasing, um, the pasture property, they all like to call it, their own, for that. Um, this is the city commission voted a long time ago, I'm trying to remember the date, but a long time ago, 18, 20 months ago, to authorize spending or paying 10% of the purchase price up to $300,000 was the original vote that the commission took. Um, the Evolution Forever has put us on the B-list. The A-list is basically, it's going to happen. B-list is maybe it'll happen if everything, all the stars align. It's a, it's a more difficult place to come off of than you might think. Um, I'm hoping that the commission might be interested. We don't have to vote on this tonight, but I wanted to introduce the concept. Um, and perhaps changing what we're offering as a city to not increase that $300,000 limit, but to change that percentage to maybe 20% or 25% of the purchase price up to a cap of the same $300,000. I think at the time, we weren't even spending the ARPA money. That was just going to come out of the general fund. Um, now we got ARPA money to perhaps draw from for this project, which I think would make it more palatable and more, more, uh, not palatable is a good word, a more palatable amount of money to spend. And I think it might get us off the dime on the, uh, on the Evolution Forever list. It might help us move from the B-list to the A-list, um, which I would love to do. As I stated, back then when we were having discussions, it, um, that pasture, that land that we all drive by on a regular basis and look at is, even though it's private property and none of us own the first grain of sand of it except the people that own it, um, we all feel like it's a part of this. Um, and it, it matters to the heart and soul of this community in many ways. Um, just like the, the historic mansion down to us. Um, and, and we all kind of feel an ownership because it's the city that we live in and it gives a character. That pasture is part of what gives this city character. Um, and this Evolution Forever solution was a way to preserve that wealth in the, um, forever category. Um, so I would have thrown it out there and see if there was any interest from your commissioners on maybe doing that. Any thoughts? I didn't drop it off the list. I just put it on the B-list. Yeah.
So how about we just take off the percentage and leave it back to $300,000? Then we have to sit here and decide what percentage to be. Set to $300,000, which is what we originally intended to count that anyways. Would that help?
That sounds great to me. I, I don't think... I can't make any promises as to whether we help or not because it's totally up to the discretion of Evolution Forever. Um, and they haven't, I haven't talked to them. I haven't, um, I haven't received any assurances from any of them. I mean, there's been no conversation at all. Um, I'm hoping that that would move us, that it would cause them to relook at us and, and say, hey, we've got a much better situation. I know when they were looking at putting us on the A or the B list, when they were making that determination, one of the things that was heavily mentioned in their discussion was the fact that, well, we'd really like to see more than 10%. We usually like to see 30% from the city involved. Um, that was said several times with some strength and, and conviction. Um, so that's why I was thinking, I'm, that's why I'm thinking that it might help move us off the, off the B-list and on the A-list.
Do, a whole question. Does anybody know how much money's left in the ARPA fund? Because I do. $239,000.
Where'd you come up with that? Because that's not where I was in my mind, although I didn't really...
Okay, so we started out with 1.4. Then we spent 427 on Virginia Drive.
We kept lots of that back? We got a lot of that back?
No.
No?
Virginia actually cost us $800,000.
Okay.
And then that left us $975,000. Then we had $170,000 for garbage, $266,000 for stormwater. That left us $539,000. And then when you take $300,000 from Melissa Park out, that leaves you $239,000.
I believe the commission can add the option at the fiscal year to return the $266 of stormwater back to the ARPA fund because it will not be used this year. And, but that's an option you have. But unless you take that option, it will remain in the stormwater fund.
Was that $266?
Two, oh, what? What was two so strong? The stormwater was $266,340, you know?
Yes, that was something that was in my thinking as well is that, um, the way it seems to be falling on is that with the state revolving fund, the way it requires projects to be done in a linear fashion. You finish one or at least a bit. Do you have to complete it or just break around and get it all the way in process before you apply for the next grant?
No, actually, we're, we're writing a letter and we're waiving that requirement so we can decide to pay it to the...
Okay.
So I want to just approve tonight for the engineering. Can't go for a grant that does have the forgiveness proposals even though we still have a grant in the process that has the forgiveness proposal for it.
So, so what I'm hoping, and, and when we took the action to apply ARPA money to the stormwater project, we had that nice, we, so, um, that, and we decided to apply money from the ARPA money to, to the stormwater project. At that point, um, that was a, that was a solution that, that the commission took. Um, and if, I think we can get to the same result, a veteran, actually, if we work through the state revolving fund with the 41% forgiveness and, and paying it back or, you know, with very old interest over a long period of time. I think that's a better way to go, just like we did with water, um, to do the stormwater. Um, and we'll get major, major money to put into it upfront with very little cost for that money. Um, and we'll be able to, to fund a significant portion of the stormwater master plan right off of that, rather than save money for it sometime in the future. Or do $266,000, $300, $49,000 worth, which really won't be very much of that whole, I think it's about $5,000. We, we pulled it out with that vote. And I, I'm not contradicting, in fact, we did pull it out with that vote. But we haven't spent the money. And when you get to the end of the fiscal year, you look at it, it all comes back into play again. Um, if we haven't spent the money, it has been spent. And we can, we budget again and, and try again. And we don't have to budget that money. Um, and we can change that vote tonight. But that's not what I'm asking for. Um, I, I'm thinking that you could add the $266 and the $239. If your numbers here are right, um, and get 490, 400, 500,000, we'll go 500,000. Um, that we still have left in the ARPA.
You weren't asking to side for money, correct? You were asking to...
I was asking...
...the $300 from the regular general funds.
Well, I wasn't really saying either one. I was saying that if we decide to spend that money of the $300,000, um, it's made easier by the fact that we have, we could pull it from the ARPA funds if we desired, as opposed to pulling it from the general fund, which is what we originally voted to do before. And that, that vote was taken before ARPA was available.
Can that also be used to walk on the state of all?
Yes, that ARPA fund can be used for anything. We've, it's clear, it's pretty clear that it could work on anything. That's one reason I think that it would be much more advantageous for us to fund stormwater with money that we can give with forgiveness and do other projects with this money. Not with this money, stormwater. Yeah, and we definitely, yes, we can. That, uh, the state revolving fund is, is exactly what, you know, small towns and that, that's a handy little thing. It's, it's what that money was there for and we're going for it. Um, that answer your question?
Um, yes, I'll have another. Um, could staff remind me how much the property is valued at?
There, there's an estimate based on the property praiser's calculations that it sits today. Um, and that is, I think, 1.2 million.
1.2?
Yeah, 1.2 million. Uh, the difficulty is in the recent, the whole idea of the percentages. Uh, the Evolution Forever people don't even get into the appraisal for purchase, the negotiation process, until you get the A-list. So they work on percentages. NYF mayor indicated 30% input from the city. But there's no idea what that 30% stands for on the B-list. So you really don't know. It's kind of a business number to think, right? I think it's almost, it almost might be better. Um, so it's a difficult thing to show you what the target is. It's a very nebulous situation.
This is somewhat nebulous and it's, it's a guess on my part. Um, it's just a political guess as to whether or not this will move that board to reconsider us. And, you know, we can say if we can keep it the way it is and they may, they can reconsider us regardless. I don't, I don't know that they will. I hope they will. But I don't, I don't know that they will. I think this would make it a much more problem. And I would love to see that property purchased through Evolution Forever. Again, open your box. We don't have to do this tonight. Uh, and maybe the best thing to do would be to, to just make the, make the, uh, presentation and then let you all think about it. Um, any other thoughts from the commission?
Yes.
Okay. No, don't be sorry, that's my turn.
One last thing. So if the property is valued at 1.2, it's not, I mean, $300,000 gets us close to 30%, but it doesn't quite get us there. So maybe we need to talk about 360.
Well, I, I understand that and I, yeah, I agree with the math, obviously. Um, but they, in that board discussion when I was there listening to them decide what not to put us on the A or the B list, they, they said rather graciously that we understand Lakeview is a small city with limited resources and, you know, that's why we're even willing to consider it with just a fraction. So they already have some grace in their hearts for us. Um, and I think, even though we wouldn't necessarily rise all the way to the 30%, um, that this would, um, would be enough. That's, again, just a political guess on my part. There's, there's no guideline that says that. If they, they put their list together, they have a lot of leeway. Um, it's, it's, uh, it's a board with a lot of leeway and I don't know what, what'll trigger them to, to move it or whether this will trigger them to move it or not. or whether this will trigger them to move it or not, it's just a guess.
So maybe we would be, maybe we could advise staff to gauge the temperature and open up the dialogue and see what might move the needle, especially, you know, gasoline.
We could do that, I don't know. It's a political board. They can, you know, staff can contact staff, but, and we might get some answers that way. Mr. City Administrator, what do you think? Do you think that by, not a territory, but acquiring of their staff?
Well, apparently, thirty percent rule is relatively new in their discussions with land acquisitions. They had no general rule prior to this, and I think they're trying to formalize thirty percent as a minimum. But again, as the mayor indicated, they know the size of this community. They really like the project. We missed meeting on the A-list by one vote. So we do have sympathy. And I would also tell you, the same staff that does Evolution Forever also does the Echo acquisition. But we did go along well with the staff.
It's the same staff, same board?
No, same, it's the same director. There's one representative that goes with Evolution, one representative goes with Echo. All three of them did along with very well.
Staff?
With staff?
Yeah. Board?
Well, that's true.
The board members are different, but we, as the city administrator said, we only missed by one vote of making the A-list, and...
Heather, just on integrity, I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe that the property owner asked for four million. So when you start talking about percentages, okay, now, whether they'll pay that, we can offer something else, I don't know. But I think you can make the argument that it would be somewhere between one-point-two and four. Just for doing that, that's...
Quite a bit different.
Yes, 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 and that's precisely why we counted it. There is a thing, you know, we obviously don't want to pay thirty percent of four million. That would be beyond our means. So we counted at three-hundred thousand, and what I'm thinking is, if we, instead of counting it, just made that basically as our offer, I'm surprised that they might move that on. I don't know when the next meeting of the Evolution Forever board is. So we may not...
We can schedule an appearance to make our proposal.
I'll get that information before our next meeting. Unless you want to vote on this tonight, what are your thoughts? Y'all want to do a vote on this tonight? I'm seeing that no, I know Mr. Bass is unable to vote on this. And what are your thoughts? Are you, you want to get more information and address this again next meeting? Okay, okay, so thank you for your patience, and I do have one blue card on the Evolution Forever. I think it's not really an agenda item, but if you'd like to speak to it again.
Okay.
You didn't say what yours was, what was yours?
Who, me? I was going to speak on this, but Ms. Brass is going to do it.
Yes.
Kelly Brass, John Street. I'm happy you guys are going to discuss this further. The upfront acquisition cost before was around eight-hundred thousand, and there was so much more involved with our mind and some part. So I think that this is a good property to acquire. I'm just wondering if the one-point-two million, is that, I'm a little confused, that's the estimated amount right now for the property appraisers?
That's a number that came from the property appraisers' office. As the city administrator said, the price is not negotiated until it's on the A-list, and then the Evolution Forever board starts negotiations with the property owner, and who knows where that goes. Now, that number is just an advisory number that we can pull from a public record.
So my question is, if that one-point-two million is something to start off on, and this is a piece of property that we want to acquire for Evolution Forever, or forever, let's just say forever in general, why not purchase that property and finance that? So that way we're guaranteed, instead of spending like eight-hundred thousand plus other costs, where we're coming up close to that amount to get it onto, to get the number up to where it's approved? If we purchase, if we purchase the property...
Just an outright purchase by the city and not have Evolution Forever be a part of it?
If the city purchases outright and wants to give it over to Evolution Forever, that's an option too, so that way it's secure. But that's a guarantee that that property will stay. You can have, I'm sure our attorney can draw up some documents that can give that property that it cannot be built on, and these are stipulations similar to Evolution Forever, if that's what they choose. But there's many given options, as far as if you're going to be close to that number anyways to try to get them to approve it, why not approve it?
I have a question.
I have a question, yeah, go ahead.
I told Heather earlier, I believe the owner of the property, when it went into the process, was asking for four million. I don't think we can afford one-point-two, I don't know how they're going to afford it.
That's why I was asking, you know, where we were, that was the estimate, and where this is going with Evolution Forever, if the numbers are close to what we were put in as a city, to what the asking price would be, then, I mean, what we're putting in to what the value would be for us to purchase. It's just a suggestion. It's a lot of money.
I didn't know, but I think if I had to look at it, this is a percentage of Evolution Forever, we're going to pay seventy percent of it. And there are those in us that pay thirty percent.
That's if it gets approved, though.
Well, if it gets approved, but I'm saying that's seventy percent that the Evolution Forever would take, or paying thirty percent of whatever the various negotiated prices.
So the number that was previously, the number worth the eight-hundred, and then it was, it was close to, it was over eight-hundred thousand?
Maintenance and that cost?
Yes, maintenance and all that, that was close to a million dollars on our responsibility. I guess that was based off of the four million, is that correct?
I can't remember, I remember something like that, and I think it was a purchase price plus maintenance over so many years, and provided, came to a total of that. So if, I can't remember how much was maintenance and how much was purchase. But we're still, whatever the maintenance cost is and the operational cost that you've got down there, that's come to remain, because that was, that was a commitment from us as part of paying something that, I don't know if it was our offer or a demand from Evolution Forever, we may pay the property. So we're going to add that maintenance cost. So you really can't add that into, you say, how much of that eight-hundred was purchased price compared to what is the purchase price? I mean, what we're looking at is somewhere between three-hundred thousand and what they're talking about, and one-point-two and four.
Okay.
So I think that answers my question. Obviously, it's a piece of property that wants, we want to reserve and not build on. Just looking at the lesser of the evils as far as how much it was spent.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that was my commission report by zone to start on, that I've done. So now we'll go to Commissioner Rupp.
Well, I think we need to do a lot of that, because it's eleven, and I think we need to make a motion to continue until midnight. So I guess I'll make a motion to continue until midnight.
I've motioned to continue midnight, but I don't think we need to go that far, but let's give ourselves the option. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I'm committed to midnight, but committed to finish.
The only thing I got to say is our discussions earlier shows our lack of self-diligence on staff not watching our bidding processes correctly, and our ordinances being so confusing in one area, saying one thing in another area, saying another, and that, yes, we need a lot of workshops, we've got to get this stuff straightened out. And I put it all on us, commissioners, we're supposed to be overseeing everything, and we're lacking in our oversight, and it's going to come to a head sooner or later.
A couple of things, one, I assume we're going to schedule a workshop or pick it up as I walk.
I think we do.
Okay, so you'll get back to us for the day. And the other thing is, on the heels of the unfortunate non-hiring of a public works director, I am starting to rethink my position as far as bringing loans is concerned. One of the things that I've always thought is incredibly important in a small town like ours is that every department head should have an assistant, and that assistant should be going through the process of learning and understanding everything they need to do to take that person's job. We can never guarantee that they will go someplace else, but if we're, we're earning people to fill the next position, city administrator should be doing that, public works director should be doing that, police chief should be doing that. If he understood that part of his job was to make sure that he had an assistant and make sure that that person got his licenses and qualifications, we need a public works director in the worst way. And I don't see anything on the horizon. I'm not, I'm not pleased with the way things turned out, but it's, it's what happens. I just don't know how much longer we can go about it.
I do want to address that public works question. One thing that we do have available to us in the short term is that these revolving, state revolving fund monies do have a certain percentage set aside, I don't know if it's two or three percent, something like that, for administrative costs and for administrative oversight. That certainly would fall into salary for a qualified person to be on staff to administer those grants and that construction. Probably get into there, so my thought then is to raise our base pay on that and then become more attractive, and, you know, to bring somebody in that would be more interested in it, and funding that through some of that money from the, from the state revolving fund grants, because we have the, the, one for the water meters, and then one for the water distribution system, and then one for the stormwater. So we've got sequentially quite a few, quite a lot of money that the one or two percent you go all the way towards that salary. That only gets you to agree years down the road, though, and then you're stuck with a higher salary than you normally have. But it certainly, it might, it might get us two or three down, years down the road. We might want to put a higher number out there, advertise a higher number, with the understanding that it could be a three-year contract, that to be negotiated at that time. I did want to ask the commission, do we want to up our game? Do we want to, to offer, right now, I think we're advertising a rate of...
No, we've never advertised a rate.
Oh, we've...
We've left it open.
We've left it open, we've talked to people about what...
Budget is sixty-five.
Yes, budget is sixty-five.
Budget is sixty-five. We might need to increase our expectation that we're going to have to spend more. That's not going to happen tonight, we don't have to vote on that tonight. But I think staff deserves direction. If we're unable to attract anyone at sixty-five, that's what staff has been, that's the number that staff has been using in trying to approve. Do we want to, do we want to up our game on that?
Can't hear you.
Any thoughts? Yeah, we're, the city is definitely in need of a public works director.
My understanding is that when they go out with the fact they say this is what, this is what we're asking, but the applicants allow them to put in what they want. So then that comes back before, so we can go with somewhere, either with what we're offering or we can go with what the applicant is asking for already.
Yeah, it is a negotiation process, absolutely. I'm just looking to free up a little bit more negotiating room for staff, is what I'm asking for. I'm getting, I think you're, I'm getting, I think you're right, kind of, of the conversation.
We, there's never really been to the point of having a candidate enter into serious discussions with this, with the exception of two that you rejected. The gentleman we, we had a few weeks ago, we did mention that we thought seventy thousand was a number that could be justified for in town. And he did accept that, you know, he wasn't making any three, he had the land. They offered another ten thousand, so he's up to ninety-three. Then after, and I occasioned continuing discussions with him, trying to find out if some, some happy medium in there that would change the money of outstanding of the land. And the final straw that killed it was their medical insurance was about four-hundred, ours was eight, yeah, four-hundred dollars a month to cover his wife. And ours was eight-hundred dollars a month to cover his wife. Our system was a better system, so PPO, there's HBO, but he said, oh my God, that really...
It's beautiful.
Yeah. Definitely improved some.
You know, and it also has their own employee medical plan.
They did try to inherit it before he had filed for it.
But that's less than five thousand dollars annually. I made the suggestion, and it was just a hopeful thing, that, you know, if we could pull thirty thousand dollars a year out of that SRF money on a short term, is, is, this gentleman we're discussing now, his option also was to step into a better position there for the land in about three and a half years, and that was another very deciding factor. And I'm thinking, well, if we made a three and a half year contract here at about a hundred thousand dollars a year, maybe that would work, but it still didn't carry the day. And that's one specific thing, one specific person, and all of those things just didn't play out. But I'm hoping that in the future, if we could raise the game a little bit, then we'd be a little more attractive.
We have advertised in the Corporate Rural Water Association newsletter our position and the, so far, who've been there, a lot of you have, that we could not pay the hand.
You know how the price reviews don't size in front of houses? The price increases on that hour? Anyway, that's all the discussion we need to do. Now, thank you, assuming further discussion, I do have a blue card from the staff.
I just want to remind you guys that when Ricky left the city, he made seventy-three thousand dollars a year. Right now, he held all the licenses for the city. Right now, you guys are paying fifty-four thousand to US Water, and you're offering to pay seventy-five thousand for a public works director. That's a hundred-twenty-nine thousand dollars for the position that one person did. That's a big difference. Because that was a plus, that doesn't include any water repairs. You had almost sixteen thousand dollars you paid US Water last month for water repairs in their monthly thing. That's a lot of money. That was all done in-house before.
We also had my work for a company.
Right, but that was very minimal, that was, it wasn't, it wasn't fifty-four thousand dollars a year. For some times. So when you think, I'm just saying, when you think about that, it's a big difference.
And then once we do get a director, US Water will be doing lots and lots.
Right, but you've got to require that director to have those rights. And that's a hard thing, it's a hard thing, it's hard to hire any qualified person now. I mean, it's really difficult.
If you're, yes, if this, and we're just going to see, I almost forgot that I have some yellow cards. Mr. Preston had, had a couple, but he has left. Unless, Mr. Preston, are you here? I don't think so, and another was from Iris White, and I believe she left as well. My apologies to those people for the late hour. Any further discussion? Only if you make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? Oh, oh, you're right, there's a target. It was a good try.
Never mind.
City Administrator reports by zone, are done, city administrator, I'm sorry, city commission reports by zone are done, city administrator, over to you.
I think the first one I'll sit on real quick, which I'm not convinced about, fireworks. Basically, under state law, and in fact, state laws, there's a definition of what is fireworks. And it says nothing, the following things are not being fireworks. And those things are allowed at all times. And it gets kind of technical, you know, it talks about how many milligrams of this, milligrams of that. So we're, for our ability to come in and regulate or to display fireworks, we can regulate that or display fireworks. But, so, and talking to Commissioner Rupp, if someone has a concern about the waters going off, except on those days when they've been exempted by state laws, law courts, Chris, New York State, days, waters are illegal now. One is not technically, those are illegal. Firecrackers are illegal, probably, anything, maybe that shoots are explosives. You see those things at the TNT fireworks stores, you know, those are spark, one of these shoots sparks up in the air, you go, smoke plays. They probably fall into the definition of things that are not fireworks. And those things by law are allowed anywhere. So in terms, so there's, where we have the ability to regulate is we do adopt additional regulations for the outdoor display of fireworks. But...
Public, right?
What's that?
Public, right?
It says the outdoor display, and it refers to a fire safety code, which I haven't been able to find. I think that's what they're talking about, but, you know, in terms of sparklers, smoke bombs, and things that by law are not defined as fireworks, those things are not. And I looked, you know, I looked at what you gave me, take these things, they're, very much, they define, take these things for not fireworks, pretty much follow the state law, so there's a state law problem with Trump saying there's a difference, but look, I think it's very much the same regulations as a state law in terms of what is a firework. Now fireworks, it's illegal under state law to, um, I think, it's like illegal to shoot. I think I've found it, it's all about right now. It's illegal to shoot it. Yes, okay, it says illegal to sell, use, or explosion of, et cetera, fireworks. But it does not mention possess fireworks. And in talking to law enforcement officers in the past, that's one of the things that's difficult about enforcing the fireworks law because, you know, you can see somebody shoot a mortar, you can see that a mortar got shot off. So we find somebody with fireworks on them, we really don't even equal to possess a firework. It's illegal to shoot it or anything like that. And it's just in terms of deciding what is deemed not a firework, you know, I don't, you would have to probably look at the packaging or whatever. And those laws talk about, you know, snake or blowworm, which, which is the best pellet, not more than ten grams of pyrochemicals. Okay? How do you find out if it's ten grams on the packaging or whatever? But that is not deemed a firework. So you can possess them. Anything not deemed a firework under state law can be possessed at all times. But I think what you were talking about trying to regulate is already a work in the national law. You know, anything that shoots, mortars, bottle rockets, smoking candles, probably other things are already just a enforcement mechanism that doesn't need to be over.
Thank you. I guess there's something going on, but I
Roger, you have any question that they can do some research on, it's about, no, I'm just reading through here on the state definitions of everything. It's very similar to the same people you gave me in comparison.
Yeah, well, they, they copied the definitions on the state where, where the thing they did, what analysis it was they went. And apply stricter requirements for getting permits.
For sales.
It's for sale and for display. They all fall underneath that last line of seven ninety-one point zero one-two. That says the code of fireworks is placed shall not govern the display of any fireworks on private residential property. And shall not guard display of those items included under statute seven ninety-one point oh four. Sub four, sub B, and sub C authorized for sale there under. I think private residents can sell them if they got permission to sell them on their property. And we can't stop them, but hopefully we can stop them from selling on commercial property.
But it also goes back to like, what are fireworks? And four D and C is, it's in this detailed definition of anything that falls, anything that falls under these categories are not deemed by law to be fireworks. And there's a provision in there that says, in the sale and use of which shall be permitted at all times. That to me is what you call pre-otion. The state just said, anything that's under, falls under these definitions is by law allowed. And so we can't go in and say, we're gonna ban sparklers and then like, state law, et cetera. We don't really need to go in and say, we're gonna ban bottle rockets, mortars, and smoking candles. It's already, it's already illegal to do that, so it's just a enforcement mechanism. The only thing maybe we can do is add to the definition, say, it's illegal to possess those things. In the state law, we're gonna say possess, it's a huge store language. And I just know that maybe the only thing that we could do is say it's illegal to possess a firework within the city limits. Whether you use it or not, and obviously everyone talks about that.
Well, I think the concern was more so in reference to homes that are close together and have to bring on roofs and not wanting to have a fire hazard.
No, no, that's very legitimate.
More so asking if we can keep them to an open area, not necessarily banning any of them, just more safety.
I'm not sure, we, you would actually be asking us, they would be asking us to authorize something that's state operated. We can't authorize, we can't say, it's okay to shoot mortars off this public field or area.
Right.
It's a state operated.
Right.
So it's, it actually backed out to enforcement, I think, really.
Thank you very much. I just
Hey, the, as you know, the city wall needs to be roofed. I added specifications, I hope I have something for your seating, that's a bit of a june bean, now of course, your back numbers for you to accept or reject. Next item, there is a female that has come to us and said, there is a home on Trader Street that is officially damaged, people cannot live in. FEMA's willing to bring me a fifth wheel trailer, put on their property, let them live there. With contractors rebuilding their house. Traders like that are not permitted to be lived in in the city for more than two weeks, or additional two weeks after that with commission approval. And they would like to have approval for up to six weeks or six months. So obviously it's up to the commission if you want to bring in a trailer for people to live in. Or six months versus the one month the government has maximum.
We would have to amend our code to allow. You, you only have the authority to go one month. So we'd have to amend our code to allow temporary trailers to be lived in on residential property for six months. So we've got to think about the criteria if we want to enter that, if we can deal with this.
That, that can't be done underneath because it was a disaster emergency, it happened under a disaster emergency that's fallen under emergency conditions that it could be just a one-time approval.
I don't, I just want our code, our code just says somebody took a trailer for temporarily for two weeks and then additional two weeks. From the city commissioner, can we amend the code by saying unless it be governor or president or director? That is the criteria I'm talking about, is it should be, you know, an additional timeframe if the residence is destroyed through a natural disaster. It's under an act of construction and it can be extended up to initial terms, six months, which may be extended for good cause shown, an active construction activity. I kind of stuff, we could put this into order, so I think we need to amend the order to make sure to do it.
My other question is the one on Macy, did they get a permit to have the motorhome there next to the house?
I'm familiar with the motorhome, you should be.
Yeah. A motor coach or a motorhome? Motor coach, motorhome, where I'm calling it. An RV.
No, I will
RV.
An RV, although they do not, and, um, I'm saying Macy.
Yeah, just past the creek, that first house I'm on.
I will tell you that amending the codes not gonna help FEMA because they want to do this if they wanted to in the last two weeks, so I could put it along with the head of state.
Well, they, they could put it, they could put it this way, a month. Okay.
All right, two other items that are not on the agenda, need to have a shade meeting with the commission. So somebody would need a call for a range shade meeting. That's the topic we need to communicate with the labor, union, negotiate, so, nominating, Mark, eleven. So I would probably go that, we have other meetings, you know, range two, the proverbial season. And lastly, there is a water, stormwater line that runs between Sydney and Virginia that is supposedly an easement. It was on a survey that noted, the survey didn't actually say, here's the easement, it just said, easement's on this side of the property. We cannot find any easement recorded that is in favor of the city in that location. The city attorney will work on that. And I need to have the commission understand, grant the mayor the warrants you signed before the next meeting. So if needed, most of dead trees that are on that area can't do it, we shouldn't do it, thus we have a reason. If you'll authorize the mayor to sign, I think it would be a shame.
So you have a, you have a area that's was abandoned, so trees need to be removed. We, we thought there was an easement, but there isn't.
Yes, there, there's one very tall dead tree, then there are other trees that are dying between two homes that are actually on Virginia. We had some indication from a survey of a adjoining house that there was an easement on the opposite side of the house. Not the subject of the survey, we cannot find any easement, however, that really would be in that location.
I think it's a stormwater drainage easement. And we, it's my understanding that there is storm, underground stormwater pipes there. But there's no indication that we actually have easement for those stormwater pipes that are there. And where those stormwater pipes are, we have dead trees, and the property owner's afraid that they're gonna fall on our property. Normally, we would say it's not our responsibility, it's your property. But we have, maybe there's an easement there, but we obviously have stormwater pipes there, so there could be a, you know, kind of an easement through use there or something like that. So discussing with Lee, if we clear it up, to make sure we get the easement that allows the pipes that we have there, in exchange for that, then we can remove the tree. The dead tree that's probably fallen on the house.
Is that the area where the ground springs are that we, we work with some residents there, put in some type of a drainage because of the ground springs that work behind our house?
It is.
Is that area?
Yep. The telephone pole that we're getting from the building, that's the law.
So the springs probably got all ground, all salt.
Yep.
So we need a motion to allow the easement to be drawn in by, by city attorney and then of the mayor to be authorized to sign that on behalf of the city, is that a possibility?
No, actually, the property owner can sign, I think I give us an easement. So, but I think it's really, you know, you're going to accept easement, but also understand we are, we can remove the dead tree of the property. Because the property owner has to sign the easement to be associated. Now, if we put within that agreement that in exchange for the easement, we'll remove this tree, then that's an obligation. We have an easement that we would have yourself. If there is an, but the deal is, give us the easement to make sure we have, make it equal to the ground stormwater pipe there. In exchange for doing that, we'll remove the dead tree, which is what we could do if we have an easement anyway, because it would be a dead tree in our easement or remove the tree.
So now that that's verified, we'd like to make that motion.
I'll, I'll be having, I'll be having to make a motion to authorize the mayor to, I guess what you're looking to do is to sign off on whatever tree company's gonna commit to take tree out.
How about, can we, how about you authorize the city to move forth to obtain an easement on the property that was just described to you? Authorizing the underground stormwater utility in exchange for bringing that, do you authorize the city to proceed with the removal of the dead tree? I thought that's what they said. Well, I understood what you said.
Do you know, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Well, we've got a second and a third.
We have a motion, the second and the third, and, and is there any discussion? Are you not, call the question, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see your hand, you're not on the mission.
I just have a question for clarification. Are you referring to the, the easement that holds the pipe from the French drain on Sydney to Virginia?
Yes.
It's gonna be next to
There's the, the, yeah, Virginia, Virginia.
It's in Portus, right?
Yes. Between Shannon and Portus.
Okay, I just wanted clarification on each one, thank you.
Aye, if you take a vote, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Who carries? I'll look forward to signing that in the near future. Are you sure personal, or are you, since they got a utility holdup, that it's already a utility easement?
They're maybe, but we can't find.
Yes, a power company, who heard that?
They are usually right on the property.
Probably. There was a flat around, and the survey showed an easement in the survey. There was no reference to where the surveyor pulled that population or where that survey could be located. So staff tried to locate one of our records, but they're not, so. If, put it this way, if there's an easement there and the tree falls, the name is just the house, and that, then all of a sudden it's our property, so actually we have some issues here. So if we just clarify the easement again, we're gonna clean it up and bring it to train.
All right.
That's not idea.
Any further, any further topics that need to be, or anything, anybody got anything? Question about Art of Camp Point, we did have a workshop, meeting, and talked to that was very informative from our city attorney and also the attorney for the Art of Camp Point project. We, of course, didn't take any action at that meeting, but we did kind of reach consensus that it would be nice if the owner, property owner brought back something to us because the law, the playing field has changed dramatically with the new law from the legislature and
So the ball's in their court.
Yeah, the ball, yeah. Our, our position has shifted dramatically, and we really need to look at it again. And hopefully, hopefully we will, but it's, the ball is in their court as to what they bring back to us. And they have a couple of questions or a couple of different things that will affect their decision on that. So we're hoping that, hoping that they will, if they do, we'll probably be calling a special meeting at that time to address that. Because speed was one of the things that they were very concerned about. And I want to publicly assure anybody that's listening that we're ready to talk. And anything else? That was important. I just want to make sure that we didn't, we just want to make takes. There's really no action we can take right now.
It's in their, it's really in their side of the table to submit to us something for your consideration. So, and I, I've interpreted what we left it as, it's not gonna be coming, not gonna be what y'all wrote it down. But maybe in a comprehensive plan, then that would allow the, some of the misuse project that the site planned, that he brought at the workshop, or whatever, might be a one of the so, but it's really in their court to decide and, you know, and Rob was very honest and said, they may, because of the tax evasion due to the new law, they may make more money with fewer units, no one affordable, under the new law than with market rate housing, you know. So that's, they're doing the number crunch.
There's a, there's a whole new equation that they, they got around and it's, the ball is in their court.
Really?
Sure. It's time to go. And meeting adjourned.